Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City of East Providence City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, February 18, 2020. But before we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to ask the colored gods to my left if they can march to the front, please. Do we stand for them? I don't know. I guess not. Yeah. While we're standing at this moment, I asked Joey Connors if you can lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joey, you can go sit. Joey, nice job. I'll sit with Mom now. Yeah, I had some written on red screen film. I figured we could adjourn in there, but we cannot take away from this. But it doesn't matter.
Mr. President, thank you for allowing us the opportunity to have a few presentations tonight. But before we start that, we would like to offer a sitting, a moment of silence. This week, we all know that we lost an iconic townie and Rhode Islander, William Bill Stringfellow, who taught school for 36 years in East Providence, was a townie and later a Hendrickson football coach. And you need say no more other than the name Stringfellow, and you know that that's synonymous with everything towny and everything East Providence. And as we sit here tonight, the family is waking Coach String, and we were there earlier, and there was certainly a line out in the rain, players from the '60s, '70s through current times. They had to honor Coach String. And also, we lost our police dispatcher. And he also served, I believe, well over 30 something years. And so if we just bow our heads for a few seconds for both. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call vote?
Councilman Cahoon.
I'm here.
Councilman Marado.
Here.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Here.
Councilwoman Souza.
Here.
And Council President Britto.
Here. Next item, please.
Make a motion to seal minutes of the executive session.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. By Councilwoman Souza, settled by Councilman Cahoon. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Marado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Next item, please.
Next item is Proclamations and Presentations. Joseph Connors, municipal court bailiff, Council Vice President Roderick.
Well, Sergeant Connors, I want you to know that normally at our council meetings, we get about three people. So you'll notice the room is full tonight, and they're all here for you. So I think we want to thank you for that. After the presentations, there is a cake out in the lobby that the mayor provided, and the family and friends of Joe, you're welcome to retire out there and have some cake. We have several presentations, so without further ado, I would just say that it is the city council's pleasure to honor Sergeant Connors for all of your work and all of your other life's achievements. And sure, we can give him a round of applause. Sergeant, the first presentation is from a gentleman from Washington, D.C., who did say to me that he would make every effort to be here. He didn't think he could make it, but he said, actually, he put you number one on his busy schedule. And so we are very pleased at this time to introduce from the United States House of Representatives, United States Congressman, the Honorable David Cicilline.
Thank you very much. I am really thrilled to be here. First, President Britto and members of the council, Mayor De Silva, Representative Kazarian, Senator Lawson, and all of East Providence community. It's a thrill to be here to recognize Sergeant Connors, who I have known for a very long time, and his wonderful mom. But we're here tonight to honor you because of the incredible life you have led and the service, Joey, that you have given to the City of East Providence. First of all, you're an Eagle Scout, which is something I never, ever achieved. So I am in awe of that by itself. But in addition to that, you're being celebrated tonight because of your 22 years as a city sergeant here in the City of East Providence, over 40 years as a Rhode Island Special Olympian. I know Dennis DeJesus is here. And you were selected to light the Special Olympics torch at the 50th year Rhode Island Special Olympics anniversary in 2018, which was an unbelievable night and a great honor for you. You were also the first person with Down syndrome in the history of the United States to serve as a United States Senate page, having been appointed by United States Senator John Chaffee. And you've obviously volunteered for lots of organizations. But you've also been a great spirit and great advocate for this city. And everyone loves seeing you, and I know everyone appreciates the service to the City of East Providence. And so I want to say congratulations on this well-deserved honor tonight and to present you with a proclamation from the Congress of the United States recognizing your service to the City of East Providence. Congratulations.
Look at that.
He knows.
He knows.
Ready, one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman. Thank you also for the leadership that you're showing to all of us here in Rhode Island. Senator Sheldon Whitehouse could not be in town today, but he sent a citation, which I would ask the city clerk to now present to Sergeant Connors.
Joey, tonight you receive a certificate of special congressional recognition, presented to you, Joseph Joey Connors, in honor of his retirement as city sergeant of the City of East Providence and for his 22 years of dedicated service to the city, dated today, February 18, 2020, signed by Sheldon Whitehouse, United States Senator.
Also, Rhode Island Governor Gina Raimondo sends her regrets. She did call and say that there were just too many things she couldn't get here tonight. And she sent a proclamation, however, on behalf of the governor's office, which the clerk will now present.
Joey, they just keep coming, don't they? This is a certificate of special recognition, and it states, "Be it known that I, Gina M. Raimondo, Governor of the State of Rhode Island and Providence Plantations, extend my congratulations to Joseph Connors. On the occasion of your retirement, after 22 years of devoted service as city sergeant with the City of East Providence, in honor of your retirement, I am pleased to issue the certificate of special recognition. You have my best wishes for a healthy and happy retirement, given under my hand at the great seal of the State of Rhode Island and Providence Plantations this 18th day of February, 2020. Gina M. Raimondo, Governor."
Representing the Rhode Island State Senate is the Honorable Senator Valerie Lawson.
Thank you, Councilman Roderick, President Britto, members of the council. It is also my pleasure to be here tonight to honor Joey. We had Joey at the Senate chamber on Wednesday to honor him for his years of service, and it was a great tribute to him. So I'm privileged to be here on behalf of the Senate, myself, Senator Conley, and Senator Koin. And I have a resolution to present to Joey in honor, whereas it is fitting that the mayor of East Providence will be declaring February 18, 2020, to be Sergeant Joseph Joey Connors' Day in the City of East Providence. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we here gathered hereby honor and congratulate Joey on his retirement as the East Providence City Sergeant.
Representing the Rhode Island House of Representatives is the Honorable Representative Kate Kazarian.
Thank you, everybody. It's so wonderful and exciting to be here tonight. Thank you to our city council, to our mayor, and to the Connors family for inviting me to be a part of this. I just want to say one thing about Joey. After getting to know him for all these years, something I'm so impressed about Joey is his dedication. His dedication to the City of East Providence, serving for over 22 years as sergeant of the municipal court, and also his dedication to his mother. It's just something so beautiful to see. He loves her so much. He's so dedicated to her, and I just think that he's just such a great guy. I'm just so honored to be here to celebrate him. So I won't read this, but this is a citation on behalf of the entire House of Representatives, including both myself, Representative Greg Amori, Representative Joe Sirocco, and Representative Liana Kasar. We just want to congratulate you.
Sergeant, I would add that the other reps sent their regrets. As you know, Representative Greg Amori is also our city athletic director, and there's an event at the high school tonight that he has to supervise, and he sends his best to the Connors family. So Joey, now that we took care of Washington and the state of Rhode Island, we turn to the City of East Providence. And without further ado, I would introduce the Honorable Mayor of the City of East Providence, Mr. Roberto De Silva.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President, members of the council, first of all, for setting this whole event up tonight, this evening. I think it's a very special event. Demonstrates how much love we have for Joey Connors. It's not going to be the same around City Hall when they have our municipal court without Joey here to welcome everybody and take care of the paperwork, make sure things are all in order. I know that he's been called on in the past to maintain order, and he always does a fantastic job, Joey. You're incredible. So I know it was mentioned earlier, and the council, I believe, has their own resolution. So I don't know if we should just wait to read yours, but we are declaring jointly, the council and the mayor, today to be the Joey Connors' Day. So today is your day, Joey. It'll always go down as being your day. And I prepared a resolution to that effect, and I'd like to present that to you now.
Joey, congratulations.
And also, state, I'm going anywhere. You know, people have always heard about keys to the city. I haven't given away too many keys to the city, but this is a special occasion. And traditionally, a key to the city has been a symbol to that person who's receiving it, that you're always welcome. Our hearts are open to you. Our arms are open to you. Our city's open to you. And Joey, as a lifelong resident and a very dedicated member of this community, City Hall is always open to you. East Providence is always open to you. And for that, I hand off to you a key to the city so that you can always remember. And before I stop, I just wanted to make sure I recognize some other people in the audience. You have Representative Ed Lynch, former Representative Ed Lynch. We have our school committee chairwoman, Millie Morris. We have our former War III councilwoman, Val Perry. Am I missing anybody? Am I missing anybody? And of course, we have our deputy chief and our fire chief will be also making presentations. Our Congressman Cicilline, thank you so much for taking time out of your day to come and celebrate this very special occasion. And of course, we've heard from our senators, our reps, and I don't want to miss anybody, but it really is special to have this event. Thank you so much, council members, for putting this together, and Councilman Roderick especially. Thank you.
Joey, hang on to that key. A lot of people are looking for that. Opens a lot of doors in City Hall. Next to represent us, the East Providence City Council, is my pleasure to present the president of this council, Mr. Roberto, not Roberto, Robert Britto. That's Roberto.
Thank you, Councilman. I want to thank first and foremost, I want to thank Dennis, Chris, and Casey Rhodes over at Special Olympics for the job that they do over there. I'll tell you, it's not easy work that they have over there, but for the work that you do, I'll tell you, I tip my hat off for you and thank you so much for being here this evening on behalf of Joey Connors. May I was beginning to think that that was a cigar box, and I said, Joey, maybe we can have a cigar after this, you know, with some, you know, little glass of wine or something. But on behalf of the city council, I have here in front of me a proclamation. And the proclamation for Joseph Connors, and I'm just going to read it because I think, Joey, that we feel sincere that, you know, about the work that you put forth for the city and all the years of services that you provided here as well. With that being said, the proclamation reads as, "Whereas Joseph Joey Connors has served the City of East Providence since 1998 as city sergeant for the city council and municipal court, whereas Sergeant Joseph Connors was born in 1968 and has a lifelong residence of East Providence, Rhode Island; whereas Joseph Connors began a more than 40-year career as a Special Olympian; and whereas Sergeant Joseph Connors participated in three Special Olympian International Games and was selected to light the Special Torch at the 50th year anniversary; whereas Sergeant Joseph Connors was employed by Stop &amp; Shop for 27 years; and whereas Sergeant Joseph Connors was the first Down syndrome person in the nation who served as a United States page, having been appointed by the United States Senator John Chaffee; whereas Sergeant Joseph Connors has achieved the prestigious rank of Eagle Scouts, Eagle Scouts for the Boy Scouts. And the best thing I know with Eagle Scouts, Joe, I can barely put my fingers together, you know, the oath of honor, am I honor, I will do my best. Whereas Sergeant Joseph Connor participated in the Special Olympics Swimming Hall of Fame; and whereas Sergeant Joseph Connors, along with his mother Barbara, helped to initiate Special Olympics recreation in the City of East Providence. Therefore, the City of East Providence Council hereby declares this day, Tuesday, February 18, 2020, as Joseph Connor's Day in East Providence." Thank you.
Also, one other introduction. I think the mayor didn't see him. He's hiding in the back of the room. But a former school committee member, former city council member, former mayor of the city, and former deputy superintendent of schools, Dr. Isidore Ramos. So Sergeant Connors, you're bringing out all the star power tonight. Representing the East Providence Police, I know Chief Nebus teaches a class, and unfortunately, with the holiday this week, he could not get here. But I believe that Deputy Chief Francis Coney is here for a presentation with other officers.
Councilman, thank you. Sergeant Connors, I've got to say, it's quite the impressive resume. It really is. Very inspirational. On behalf of the East Providence Police Department, we want to thank you for your dedicated service of 22 years. You did not have an easy job. We know that, especially trying to keep the police officers in line in municipal court. It's not an easy job. But thank you very much. Inspector Sirocca has a couple of words.
Sergeant, thank you very much for being here. I've been in prosecution. I started working with Joey 10 years ago, and he kept us in line. So he's retiring, so we're not going to have a municipal court anymore because it's not going to run the same. But we don't know what we're going to do without you, buddy. We appreciate you. So thank you.
For those who can't see, the police chief is presenting Sergeant Connors with, is it a police jacket of? Not to be outdone, is our fire department chief. I would ask Chief Glenn Quick to please come forward.
It's a tough act to follow. How you doing, Joey? Thank you for your service. On behalf of the men and women of the East Providence Fire Department, I hereby announce Joey Connors, honorary firefighter, City of East Providence.
Joey, make sure you show your brother Kevin that one. Kevin's a retired firefighter. Our last formal presentation is from the representation of the Rhode Island Special Olympics. And I believe there's a delegation there. And I'll read some of the leaders who will come forward. Dennis DeJesus, Chris Hopkins, and Casey Rhodes. Either or, all of you would please come forward. And anyone else from Special Olympics? If you would just stand and say hello. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. It's been mentioned tonight about our 50th anniversary, which we celebrated in 2018. And with 4,000 athletes in our program, we had a very, very tough decision to make. Who was going to light the cauldron to celebrate the 50th anniversary? And we had a meeting in our office, and I'll never forget it. We went around the room, and we said, who could possibly, who would best represent the athletes of Special Olympics Rhode Island? And right around the table, everyone said Joe Connor. And we knew we picked the right person because when he stepped to the cauldron that night, the place went absolutely crazy in honor and respect of Joe. And Joe, you are a giant of a Special Olympian. You've represented us so well over the years, 40 years as an athlete, three international games. We're so very, very proud of you. And now that you're in retirement, you can work harder on the sports that you participate in, in Special Olympics, right? But on behalf of Chris and Casey, we just want to say congratulations. Job well done. And let me say this about the City of East Providence. When you honor somebody, you honor somebody. You know, as someone who grew up in Cranston and worked in Cranston politics, I don't think I've ever seen so many proclamations in honoring one person. But Joe is deserving of each and every honor. And I think it was the representative who probably touched on something that is critically important, the love he has for his mother and the love his mother has for Joe. And I think that should be celebrated tonight as well. Joe, on behalf of the 4,000 athletes in our program, on behalf of our staff, on behalf of our countless volunteers at Special Olympics Rhode Island, thank you for all you've done to make our organization a great one. And I heard today you were born in 1968, which was the founding of Special Olympics internationally. So the 50-year celebration in 2018 was also to mark your 50th birthday. So God bless, Joe.
Members of Joe's family are here today. Before I ask them to just stand and take a bow, we would say a happy 90th birthday last month to Barbara Connors, Joey's mom. 90, and I say that proudly because she acts and looks like she's 40. She's around the community every day of the week. So would all the members of the Connors family please rise? Barbara, would you like to close this out? You and Sergeant, and say a couple of words. If you do, you have to use the microphone because it's being taped for television.
I really can't say anything. I'm going to cry if I say anything. I just, thank you, thank you, thank you, everyone. I just don't know what to say, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. You stand. Joey, stay here for a picture. Barbara, can we get one picture?
Can we get the couple together?
Yeah.
Can we ask the other electric official if you don't mind? Can you get up here? I'll stand over. I don't mind.
Have you ever seen the man? Joey, we've never seen the man not take a picture.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right. All right, Joey. All right, Joey.
Good job.
Thank you, honey.
Madam Clerk, we're going to do a little jumping around at this point in time.
Yes.
So, we're going to proceed under proclamations and presentations from the council side. We're going to take item B, I want to say.
That would be, if you're following along, it's on page four.
Item B, yes. We're going to move that right on up.
Yep. Charitable donations to White Neck Elementary, PTA, Councilwoman Souza.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to thank the council for moving this up for me. So, this is, as we know, the schools throughout the community have had project playground, which meant that a group of volunteers, along with the PTA, worked very hard at fundraising to get brand-new playgrounds built for our students in the community. As we know, White Neck Elementary School was one of the last schools to have their playground built. And that's because we had extra amenities that needed to be worked out, given the handicap accessibility that was needed for the playground for the children, which also put an additional cost on the playground build, so it took a little bit longer. The PTA worked very hard and diligently over the course of a few years, along with the community, to get playground funding. And we were able this summer to build the playground. To my knowledge, it is not 100% built. There are some other aspects that we're looking, they're looking to expand on. But for the most part, it's a beautiful playground that the kids enjoy very much at White Neck. That being said, I had thought of ways to assist the school in looking for donations because building an $80,000-plus playground takes a very long time to fundraise. So, your, you know, chocolate bars and pizza, pasta dinners, they take a lot of those to get that kind of money. So, we have wonderful organizations throughout the community and businesses that are always looking to help where they can. So, we have waterfront concerts that came into the city three years ago on our waterfront that provided the community with wonderful concerts and entertainment. And they've blended really well in the community and have been an asset to East Providence. So, having reached out to the general manager, Katie, she thought it was a wonderful idea and was very happy to help the playground. So, they don't, they dedicated a concert in October and any funds raised, they did a matching for whatever their proceeds were. And they were fortunate enough to raise $750 to donate to the White Neck School out of their proceeds. So, I'd like to call up the general manager, Katie, and her production manager, Dan, to present the donation to White Neck PTA.
Just wanted to say thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to participate in this community. Absolutely love it. I am a PTO mom. This was, I wish we could have done more, hope to do more in the future, but I absolutely love that we had the opportunity and thank you so much for giving us that. We really enjoy being in this community, like I said, and, and we look forward to growing more and we look forward to supporting the community more. And we welcome any ideas to do so. So, thank you so much. Thank you very much.
So, right now, if I could have the members of the PTA for White Neck and any family and friends of the White Neck to come up and receive the check on behalf of the waterfront concert.
So, we have the PTA President, Josh, and Natalia, who is the treasurer.
I'm Jane, Vice President. Thank you. So, on behalf of the collaboration between the city, working with waterfront concerts, we are excited to present this and hope that we can get more towards the school. There's always a maintenance fund that requires to keep up with these playgrounds, so the money can go to whatever the playground committee needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I guess we just say thank you. And yeah, thank you, Councilwoman, thank you, City Council. And yeah, this, this will be great. Still kind of a little bit of work in progress, but we, we have an awesome playground. Thanks to the, the city and this will go a long way. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And just to cap it off for the Councilwoman for now, if we want to move on to item D under Council Communications for Event Announcements.
Thank you, Council President. So, as we know, March is coming upon us and March is International Women's History Month. So, I will be hosting our annual Women's History Event here in City Hall. It'll be March 4th at 11:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. This year is the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment, which gave the woman the right to vote. Women have gone through years of progress in many professions and avenues and have strived through a lot of suffrage. And so, this year is a remarkable year in which we get to honor a lot of women throughout history. We will be having our guest speaker, the Secretary of State, Nellie Gabeel, will be here. Students from the high school and the middle school, as always, will be here to join in the event and it is open to the public. We also will have a light lunch with some refreshments. So, please, all are welcome. It's from 11 to 1. And that being said, I also have a resolution I'm putting before my fellow council members declaring March as Women's History Month in the City of East Providence. Whereas every year, March is dedicated to Women's History Month by a presidential proclamation, the month is set aside to honor women's contribution in American history. And whereas Women's History Month began as a local celebration in Santa Rosa, California, the Education Task Force of the Sonoma County, California Commission on the Statistics of Women planned and executed a Women's History Week celebration in 1978. The organizers selected the week of March 8th to collaborate with International Women's Day. The movement spread across the country as other communities initiated their own Women's History Week celebration and following every year. In 1998, a consortium of women groups and historians led by a National Women's History Project, now the National Women's History Alliance, successfully lobbied for the nation's recognition. And in February 1998, President Jimmy Carter issued the first presidential proclamation declaring the week of March 8th, 1998, as Women's History Week. And whereas subsequent presidents continued to proclaim the National Women's History Week in March until 1987, where Congress passed a law, 100-9, designating March as Women's History Month. Between 1988 and 1994, Congress passed additional resolutions requesting and authorizing the president to proclaim March of each year as Women's History Month. And since 1995, each president has issued an annual proclamation designating the month of March as Women's History Month. And whereas National Women's History Alliance selects the publishers, the yearly theme, the Women's, the 2020 Women's History Theme is "Villain Women of the Vote." That honors, the theme honors the brave women who fought to win the suffrage rights for women and for the women who continue to fight for the voting rights of others. Determined to Rise shapes a broader understanding of the women's suffrage movement through the turn of the century, acknowledging not only the achieving results in the ratification of the 19th Amendment and also its profound limitations. Now, let it be their resolved that the City of East Providence, City Council hereby authorizes the mayor of East Providence to proclaim March 2020 as Women's History Month. With that being said, I make a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor right now, approves a resolution. Councilwoman Souza, seconded by Councilman Cahoon. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I vote aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Thank you. So, if we could just proceed in all manner of the order of what we have on the docket this evening?
Yes. The next item is consent calendar.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye. Next item, please.
Council to convene as Board of Licenses, Show Cause Hearing, Cliff Lickers, 191 Will at Avenue Riverside.
Mr. Solicitor, would you like to take the lead on this, please?
Thank you. Are the representatives from Cliff Lickers here tonight? Could you please come up? Thank you, sir. As you know, it's in your packet, Cliff Lickers was asked to appear today for a show cause hearing for an alleged violation of selling to a minor. There's a police report attached to the, to the show cause letter, which was mailed to the Cliff Lickers on about February 10th, 2020. Did we see that letter, sir?
Yes.
And it's my understanding that based upon a disposition that's been relieved, that has been reached with Assistant Solicitor Dylan Connolly, the owners of Cliff Lickers agreed to admit the violation and pay the minimum fine of $250 as, as set in our ordinances. Is that correct, sir?
Yes.
So, with that, I would ask that the, that the, this council vote to accept the disposition of the claim and impose the fine as stated.
Mr. President, please.
And by the way, sorry, I would, I would also enter into the record for the, for the clerk, the letter of February 10th, 2020, and that portion of the police report dated 19-4054-05, excuse me, 19-4054-OF as the evidence in this case.
Second.
So, we have a motion on the floor to accept the disposition of claim by Councilman Cahoon, seconded by Councilman Roderick. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye. Next item, please.
Next item is license approvals not requiring public hearing, application for special event, alcoholic beverage class F1. Type of event, Mardi Gras. Date of event, Saturday, February 29th, 2020. Applicant, St. Brendan's Parish, 55 Turner Avenue Riverside. Representative for applicant is Ronald War.
Is the applicant here, Mr. War, here at this time? If not, at the pleasure of the council, all their information, all set? Everything's in place at this time?
Yes.
Council, have any questions or concerns?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Councilman Morato. Anyone like to second that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Souza. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye. Next item, please.
Licenses requiring public hearing, class A liquor license. This is a public hearing. Request for transfer, Cliff Lickers LLC, transfer to Lindlaw LLC, doing business as Cliff Lickers.
Before, this, again, this is a public hearing, but before we have the public come to speak for or against this, at council pleasure at this point in time, you have any questions about the transfer? Everything in order, Madam Clerk?
Yes, everything's in order.
Okay. Again, it is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please approach the podium. If not, public hearing, hearing is closed at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the liquor with the understanding that the fine in the, that was imposed be taken care of prior to the transfer of the license.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor?
I second that.
He's second. I'm sorry. Councilman Morato?
I second that.
Okay. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye. Thank you.
Good luck.
Next item, please.
The next item is public comment.
Anyone here sign up for public comment? Please feel free to approach the podium at this time.
First person listed on public comment tonight is Lucy Pereira. And the docket item topic is closing hours for businesses.
Ms. Pereira?
I'd like to once again thank you for working so hard on behalf of the citizens of East Providence and the businesses of East Providence to make the businesses accessible 24/7. It's a small showing. A lot of the people who would love to be here obviously have commitments in the evening, which is another reason why they can't go to the gym in the evening. They need overnight hours. But we'd like to thank you for making, possibly making it possible for us to return to hours that are most convenient for us at the gym and, eh, other businesses that they, that they use in East Providence. So, thank you so much for your, your hard work and dedication to the citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pereira. Next person, please.
Next person on public comment is Dan Landry. And the docket item topic is speed cameras.
Bet you thought I was going to talk about a recipe, huh? So, I missed the last meeting you had with regards to the speed cameras. And I know there's supposed to be a meeting next Wednesday, I believe, is that still on? So, it's at 7:00 o'clock. Is that here?
Yes.
Correct. The 26th, yep.
Yeah, you might want to make that known again because I don't, I think the only time you talked about it was just that one time of the meeting, so the public knows. But, and at this point, I don't even know if I'm in favor or not of the speed cameras, so I just had more, some-
Next item, please.
Licenses requiring public hearing. Class A liquor license. This is a public hearing. Request for transfer, Cliff Liquors LLC, transfer to Lindlaw LLC, doing business as Cliff Liquors.
Before, again, this is a public hearing, but before we have the public come to speak for or against this, at council pleasure at this point in time, you have any questions about the transfer? Everything in order, Madam Clerk?
Yes, everything's in order.
Okay. Again, it is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please approach the podium. If not, public hearing is closed at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the liquor with the understanding that the fine that was imposed be taken care of prior to the transfer of the license.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor?
I second that.
He's second. I'm sorry. Councilman Morado?
I second that.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye. Thank you.
Good luck.
Next item, please.
The next item is Public Comment.
Anyone here sign off for Public Comment? Please feel free to approach the podium at this time.
First person listed on Public Comment tonight is Lucy Pereira, and the docket item topic is Closing Hours for Businesses.
Ms. Pereira?
I'd like to once again thank you for working so hard on behalf of the citizens of East Providence and the businesses of East Providence to make the businesses accessible 24/7. It's a small showing. A lot of the people who would love to be here obviously have commitments in the evening, which is another reason why they can't go to the gym in the evening. They need overnight hours. But we'd like to thank you for making, possibly making it possible for us to return to hours that are most convenient for us at the gym and other businesses that they use in East Providence. So thank you so much for your hard work and dedication to the citizens.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pereira. Next person, please.
Next person on Public Comment is Dan Landry, and the docket item topic is Speed Cameras.
Bet you thought I was going to talk about the rest of you, huh? So I missed the last meeting you had with regards to the speed cameras, and I know there's supposed to be a meeting next Wednesday, I believe. Is that still on? So it's at 7:00. Is that here?
Yes.
Correct. The 26th, yep.
Yeah, you might want to make that known again, because I think the only time you talked about it was just that one time of the meeting, so the public knows. And at this point, I don't even know if I'm in favor or not of the speed cameras, so I just have more, some questions to lay out. So it pertained more to the police side of things, so I just wanted to know currently how many officers are qualified to conduct radar details? And are those details being performed on a daily basis? And if not, how often are they being done? And are they being conducted in school zones? If not, why not? And then I would also say, if we could get maybe some ticket issuing data from 2018 versus 2019 for speeding violations, and if we could see where those violations have been issued, just to get some real data that we can speak to and look at to see where the real problems are. I know everybody says speeding's an issue, and I think that's in pretty much every neighborhood. I can't say I'm not guilty of speeding. I drive a Mustang, so I'm sure I probably am. So in addition to that, I would say, has anybody contacted Pawtucket? Because they've already gone through this whole process, so I'm sure they can lend us some helping information. And I know when I looked at, there was an article in The Breeze just recently about them and their program raising some $624,000. But it did say that during the week, they're issuing anywhere from $5,000 to $10,000 tickets a week. And that number of tickets has created a lot of work on the backside for them for IT support and then also the court system, because a lot of these people are disputing these tickets, and it just makes an overflow of work for that side of it. So I think that's something else we have to consider. The other thing I was thinking is that, I was recently down in Florida, and down there when they have the crosswalk, you're able to push a button, and there's a yellow flashing strobe light, which really draws your attention to somebody crossing, and everybody stops. I thought a similar thing could be done here, maybe prior to doing the camera systems, in that alerting people to being in a school zone. In the morning, when I drive to work, I drive by the high school every day, and I purposely have been trying to drive the 25. And 25 is slow, and people just, they're right on you, they go around you, and, I mean, people are cruising by there at probably 40, 45 miles an hour. So maybe just if initially we just started with some yellow flashing strobe lights at the school zone signs, because there is one posted there, and it says when you're supposed to go at certain times, that 25 mile an hour. But people are just not paying attention, they're just blowing right through, so maybe that's an initial start as a warning system first, before we start going crazy ticketing people. And in addition to that, again, maybe we start with some heavy police patrols and radar patrols in the school zones, because, I gotta be honest, I mean, the number of times I've seen, I know the one guy who I always known to do Sergeant Andrews is always the guy out there with the radar gun, where I heard he'll give his own mother a ticket. I've seen him in the same spots all the time, and, you know, it's either Roger Williams at Massasoit, Forbes Street. I've never seen it in front of the high school. And when I was younger, I got a ticket when I first started driving on Prospect Street, and that was always a speed trap in Pawtucket. And then people just learn, don't go that fast on school streets. So it does work, but I just don't think we're doing enough of it. So again, I don't know what the situation is, but it'd at least be nice to have that information for the meeting next week, and I'm sure if somebody put a request out to the police department, I'm sure we could get some of that data. But that's really all I had. Again, at this point, I'm not really in favor or not in favor. I've known a lot of people who have been ticketed, Newport Avenue, my friends and neighbors, so there is quite a few people that have been ticketed, so.
Thank you.
That's it.
Mr. President, if I may, I want to echo a lot of what Ms. Landry has said, because a lot of what he has said has been said to me either through emails or calls, in those words or other words. And a lot of those same concerns and questions kind of dovetail with some of the concerns and questions that I have. Some of those involve, you know, what would the cost of the system be on the back end? I mean, ultimately, if we're looking to get some kind of benefit, whether it be societal or whatever, there's a cost that's associated with implementing a program like that. It would be good to have some of that data so that we can make a decision on, you know, what the cost benefit is. So I think that any discussion that we have, if we can present those questions to the city and perhaps have a more informed discussion come Wednesday, I think that will be a better use of everyone's time.
So when you say cost, Councilman, what are you referring to?
Well, I would wonder, first of all, you know, Mr. Landry brings up a good point with regard to the administration of the program. You know, how do you handle things like the actual issuing of tickets, right? How is that done? Is it done electronically? Is it done through the mail? You know, is there postage involved? Is there administration on the back end to keep track of all those tickets? Which ones are paid? Which ones are being fought? Is there an additional IT burden on the city? Do we need to overhaul any of our systems, et cetera, et cetera? I think, you know, there's a supportability side that, you know, that needs to be considered.
Could I also add, and I know it's not the topic, but Solicitor, can you add to the list of questions? If Pawtucket or any other municipality had to add additional municipal court dates and/or municipal court judges because of the influx of those summoners, it's just something good for us to keep in mind and to also discuss.
I could tell you Pawtucket has. Yeah.
I just want to just caution the council, this was public comment. I don't want to get too far into the discussion regarding the actual issues that were raised. I do have his questions. I will give a copy to you as well, and I'm sure Mr. Britto and others from the police department will have these answers for you at the next.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Next item, please.
Next item, and next person on Public Comment is Dean Kretikakis, Closing Hours for Business.
I'm here to speak about Closing Hours for Businesses. We own numerous businesses in the city, including car washes, gas stations, and a laundromat. We also own five laundromats throughout Providence, East Providence, Pawtucket, and Cranston. And we're here to tell you that we do not open or close any of our places after 11:00, and we're not for the 24 hours. We feel that nothing good can come later on in the night. You know, we are experienced. We've been in business for 29 years. We have seen it. I do know that the laundromats have come before the council twice already and have not passed under this ordinance amendment, and now it's being brought into gym and health clinics. Gym and health clinics are a totally different animal than a laundromat. It's a different land use zone. It's a completely different, a laundromat is more of a service where people come. And, you know, we don't feel the need that a 24-hour is needed, and we have past experience. Also, Councilwoman Souza brought up in the last council meeting about coming up with better policy and procedures in place to regulate the businesses within the city, that there were real no true policy and procedures in violations of ordinances. Now, I understand the gym, which I have no problem being 24 hours. I think that could be something good. However, it was open seven years with no one knowing, apparently. So what's going to make it stop from every other businesses opening up 24 hours? Who's going to regulate that? If you guys are claiming you have a tougher time regulating during regular business hours, who's going to regulate it at night? I mean, seven years for a business to be open, not meeting ordinance, and no one called on, there was no violations, nothing was said? I mean, I believe you're opening a can of worms, and nothing good is going to come of this? And, you know, every business is going to feel, well, I can open 24 hours, and, you know, well, if they did it for seven years, I can do it without getting caught. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
That concludes Public Comment. The next item is Council Communications. If you're following along, that's Page 4, Discussion, Real Estate Development Update Near Gansett Plaza/Newport Avenue in Rumford. Council President Britto.
Thank you, City Clerk. This came to my attention in addition to Councilman Rodrick's attention about a week ago or so, where the two of us had met with the developer who is considering redeveloping the parcel of land that's between Newport Avenue, Moore Street, New Road, and Pine Grove Street as well. There's a parcel right now, it's an empty parcel, there's only two houses on the back portion of that property. It's approximately eight acres of land. The developer is looking to develop that parcel of land and for mixed use. At this point in time, they are asking that we have a community meeting on Saturday, February 29th at 12:00 noon. Uncle Tony's Pizza, they provide the pizza as well, free pizza with soda. And they'll have their rendering of the development at that point in time, and they'll be able to address any concerns for any residents at that point in time who would like to see what the development is being proposed. They're going to be asking for input from the public as well from this meeting as to what type of proposals that they're looking to perform at their site. And I don't think there's anything else that I could mention that we briefly talked about during that time to develop this parcel of land. Again, this land is vacant at this point, and they're looking to redevelop it into a mixed use.
I think you covered it. There's nothing to add, other than this is a large eight-acre piece of land that is just unkempt, and sometimes cars are parked there. So I have an open mind. Let's see what they want to do. Let's see what the neighbors say. We'll have this meeting, and we'll go from there.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Councilman. Next item, please.
Next item is Item C, Community Meeting Announcement at Weaver Library. Councilwoman Souza.
Next Tuesday, sorry, February 25th at 6:00 PM in the library communicate, community room, we'll be holding a council, a community meeting to discuss any community concerns that anybody may have regarding anything that's going on in the city. So we have various topics that have been discussed here at the council meeting regarding speeding, rodents, business hours. So anything that you have, that you want to discuss in an open forum, we're having a roundtable meeting. If you are unable to attend the meeting because of prior obligations, please feel free to email any questions. We'll bring them up at the meeting, and then we'll have a follow-up meeting to discuss any things that may or may not be implemented.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Next item, please.
Next item, we're going to move down to Item E, and that's Event Announcement, Carousel Dinner Fundraiser. Councilman Morado.
Just an announcement, the Carousel Committee is having their annual pasta dinner. It's going to be February 29th at the Brightridge Club on Brightridge Ave. It's going to be from 6:00 to 8:00, and the tickets are $12 per person. It's a great event. I encourage anyone to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Moving right along to New Business.
New Business, Reports of Other City Officials, Claims Committee Report. Solicitor Michael J. Marcello.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council President, members of the City Council, as you know, the City Council met as a Claims Committee at 7:00 prior to that meeting, and the following action was taken. A member of an understanding regarding collective bargaining with the Local Police Officers Union 569, there was an amendment approved to the contract which basically changed their shift hours by 15 minutes to align with the start of the shifts being on every hour instead of 15 minutes previous to the hour. That was approved unanimously. New claims, the following claims were approved. The claim of Ann Cappuccina for $907.62 was approved. The claim of John Ammoni's was referred to the Rowan to Local Trust for further action. The claim of Amy O'Neil was approved in the amount of $4,661.50. The claim of Audrey J. Wasserman for tree damage and alleged foundation damage was approved pending a release of all claims in an amount of $359. Sewer charge abatements in the following amounts were approved by Maria Ferrera in the amount of $257.76. The claim of William, excuse me, the sewer charge abandonment of William Looney in the amount of $703.68 also approved. And the claim of Kenny Mederos in the amount of $547.74 was approved. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Moving right along to Handicap Parking Spot Request.
Yes, Handicap Parking Spot Request, 264 Juniper Street, 02914. Requested by Director of Public Works, Steve Kuttu, sponsored by Councilwoman Souza.
Make motion to approve recommendation.
Second. We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilman Cahoon. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. We'll move beyond the resolution for declaring March as Women's History Month. We did that already, and we're going to move to the second resolution, changing the school state aid from biannual to monthly installments.
So would you mind, Mr. President?
No, please take the lead. No, go ahead. Go right ahead.
So for some reason, East Providence is called out in statute and is different from other municipalities in the state in that we receive our aid, I think everybody understands you get school revenue from the local general fund through taxpayer revenue, and you get it from the state, in the form of state aid according to the state funding formula. The state aid is allocated to the City of East Providence by way of biannual installments, specifically in October and April of each year. That is not the case in other municipalities. In other municipalities, that, those installments are made on a monthly basis. So the resolution is requesting a change in the statute so that we can be brought into line with other municipalities, make things easier from an administrative standpoint, et cetera, et cetera.
And if I'm not mistaken, Councilman, you correct me if I'm wrong here, we're the only municipality in the state that has biannual.
That sounds right. I don't know.
There might be one other one there. It might be one other municipality, but all the other municipalities receive their state aid on a monthly basis. So this was passed by the school committee, last school committee meeting, and we're hoping that it can be passed this evening as well.
Mr. President, I'd move approval.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilman Rodrick for approval on this resolution to change state school aid from biannual to monthly installments, seconded by Councilman Morado. Roll call vote.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye. Thank you.
Mr. President, I suppose it doesn't matter at this point, but I just want the council to know, I forgot to mention it, the school committee did pass a resolution to us to ask us to pass that very resolution just this past Tuesday. I should have mentioned that, so I'm sorry.
That's all right. Moving right along to ordinances.
Ordinances for First Passage. The first is ordinance authorizing the issuance of general obligation refunding bonds, co-sponsored by Council President Britto and Councilman Cahoon.
Councilman.
So what we're looking at here is essentially a refinancing, a loan. The city took $5 million, or issued $5 million worth of bonds in 2010. The city is looking to basically refund, issue a refunding bond to basically pay that back and take the same loan again with a lower interest rate, because interest rates now are better than they were in 2010. So it's a refi.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion on the floor for approval. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second by Councilman Cahoon. Motion by Councilwoman Souza. Roll call vote.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye. Next ordinance, please.
Next ordinance, it's ordinances for second and final passage with public hearings. The first is Ordinance Amendment, Juvenile Hearing Board, Section 2-181, Composition of Board, sponsored by Council Vice President Rodrick. of board, sponsored by Council Vice President Rodrick.
Mr. President, I, I think we had a lengthy discussion on this for a few meetings and basically the legal department's research corrected some things. For instance, an old ordinance said that vacancies could only be filled in October, but what happens when someone leaves in the January after that or November after that? We have some vacancies on the juvenile hearing board and some longtime members are ready to move on and we have others ready to be approved. So it's basically cleaning up some language. It's been posted, talks about the makeup, have to be East Providence residents, pretty much similar thing. And I think that the police department deserved to have a full juvenile hearing board and some of the members who have been on for 10 or 12 years and are ready to move on deserve to know they've been hanging on. So I'm in support of this and would move its approval.
Councilman, I just have a question. Is there, I don't see anywhere, the previous ordinance mentions that there should be representatives from each of the wards. Is this one not represented that way too, so it could be?
It does call for council confirmation, I believe, Mr. Solicitor.
Correct.
So the, that was another issue in the past, council members individually would appoint members, but as we've all found out with the new charter, there are very few of those appointments that the council has directly. So the, the mayor's office would make the recommendation, but we still have to approve. We can't nominate a name, so we would say yes or no.
I just meant for equal representation throughout the city.
Throughout the city, correct. So the, I don't know that it spells that out. I'm going to look at this again, but I, I think that if five recommendations came in from Ward X, you know, we would probably not approve that, or at least we'd have the right to not approve it. So there's still a failsafe involved that the council retains.
So if I can ask a question of that, and I guess this would be more to Mr. Britto and Ms. Souza since you've been up here before, what do we do in the scenario, in the situation where if we've got a ward requirement and we have nobody from a particular ward that's interested and we have multiple interested parties from, right, another ward? Do we allow the position to remain vacant so that we can't, you know, because we can't meet that requirement? Or do we allow people that are interested in serving in, to serve?
I think we have an obligation to suggest or recommend names as well to the mayor for him to entertain those names that we suggest. So for an example, if it's going to come from only one ward and, you know, another ward had a couple of people on there suggested or recommended to the mayor and that was, those names were bypassed and were focusing primarily on the majority of those people coming from one ward, then we as a council would have to, I think, take action on that. Take action in a way that, you know, we have the right at that point in time to say yea or nay for any of those votes that come in front of us or any of those names that come in front of us. In the past, as council as a whole collectively, each ward had us, had a designated spot that we could refer someone to that designated opening.
Automatically.
Automatically. Going forward, that's not, unfortunately, that's not the case at this point in time. But we do have an option that we say yea or nay.
Right, you have two qualified interested people in Ward 1, right, that want to do it, and for some reason I can't find anybody in Ward 3 that's interested. I certainly wouldn't want to hold up appointment of one of those people simply because I need to find someone to.
And that's happened in the past as well, whereas a certain, a certain council person would have a couple of people and another council person wouldn't have anyone, and essentially that council person who didn't have anyone say, "I'm more than happy to, you know, give you my, my slot that I have." So that's happened in the past as well.
Okay.
And we have, and I think that's why it's important that we have alternates, because then when there's not a vote enough for a quorum, an alternate can step up and act and fill that hole. I just, I don't want to see any of the boards or commissions because it's one person who can essentially appoint them with council approval that it be sway to one side or another in the community when each of the sections of the community are vastly different. So I just want everybody to be well represented with, throughout the city. That was, that's my only concern.
Yeah, I agree.
So if the administration honors, you know, and looks at what the council puts forward for recommendations and is open to those, then I'm okay with that too. Again, just, I just agree, I agree with what the council president says. He nailed it on the head.
Mr. Solicitor.
Just to add, just a little bit to add to that, the council's check on that is the approval process. So if the, if the mayor were to appoint everyone from the same ward, you could obviously reject that. So you have the ultimate authority to approve the appointments and if the mayor, so knowing the council's wishes, the mayor would not be too, whoever the mayor is would not be, you know, would be advantageous to the mayor to try to get the diversity that the council wants because you ultimately have to approve that appointment. We took it out, by the way, Councilman, I think after some discussions with you, because we view that as, it was tied to the appointing, because the council was the appointing authority at that time, every council person had the ability to make their own appointment, basically. So now that it's switched, we had, we felt it was more beneficial in line with the mayor, former government to take that out, the ward requirement.
So I think the basic answer to Councilwoman's question is there is no ward requirement specifically, but we retain final say. So if common sense would dictate to me, if five or three or four, whatever, recommendations were made from one ward, I, I would tend to want to reject that and ask for diversity.
Any further questions? None from the council?
Public comment.
This is a public comment. Anyone from the public, public wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, please step up to the podium. If not, public comment is closed at this point in time, and we're going to use this time as a vote for the council members. Hold it. Do we have, we have a motion?
I made a motion.
Anyone second that motion, first of all?
I'll hold on a second.
Before we proceed. Councilman Cahoon has seconded the motion. You have a question, Councilman?
I do not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Roll call, vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye. Thank you. Next ordinance, please.
Next is, next ordinance, that is also for second and final passage with public hearing, no parking zone, Patek Avenue. This is Section 18-307, sponsored by Council Vice President Rodrick.
Mr. President, at the last meeting, Director Koutou addressed this issue, and it basically, nothing has changed. It involves eliminating the total of one parking space on the street to accommodate a congested area where people are having trouble driving in and backing out of the Epcap building, the East Bay Community Access Program. And Mr. Koutou's testimony was that it only involved the displacement of one parking spot on the street. So I, I supported him back then and I would support the final passage today.
Thank you, Councilman. This is a public hearing, so anyone from the public wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, please approach the podium. Doesn't look like anyone's interested. With that being said, public comment is now closed at the pleasure of the council. You have any questions regarding this matter? If not, we have, is that a form of a motion?
It is.
So we have a motion on the floor from Councilman Rodrick. Does anyone?
I'll second.
Like to second that motion? Seconded by Councilman Morado. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye. Next ordinance, please.
Next ordinance is, this is also second passage, second and final passage, public hearing is also offered, no parking zone, Brunswick Street/North County Street, Section 18-307, sponsored by Councilwoman Souza.
So again, this is a small section on Brunswick that is for no parking. The street, much like a lot of the streets in the center of the city, are old, very narrow. This section causes hardship for, if there's a car parked there for people to pass or pull out of driveways. There's plenty of on-street parking before and after. I think it's about a 30-foot section, so it just allows for safety in moving throughout that street, towards the end of the street. So if there are, it's public comment.
This is for public comment. Anybody here wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, please approach your podium.
Thank you, woman.
Sir, can you just announce, state your name?
My name is Pat Foley, and this, my house is the one in question, and I have a two-car garage which was built 100 years ago, literally five feet from the street. You probably couldn't do it today with zoning, but consequently, I, as you would normally back out of a driveway and begin your turn, I can't do that. My, my driveway is my garage. And as of late, there's been vehicles parked directly in front of my, that garage in a narrow driveway. And at 70 years old, my neck doesn't spin around like it used to. I'm a retired senior citizen. I'm asking only for that one parking space, maybe about 16 feet, no parking. There's plenty of other spaces around there and it's very difficult backing out. I've got to stop and go three or four times. Cars are stopping on each side of me and it, I think is dangerous. I don't want to back into a vehicle behind me. So I've never asked anything before. I love the city, but this will be a big help to me. I'm in and out of there a lot. I have a friend that stays with me. He's a courier. He parks in the driveway. He's in and out at, at all hours too. So I would appreciate it if you would approve that. Thank you.
For 70, sir, you look damn good. Continue doing what you're doing.
Blue jeans and plastic surgery.
Call the school.
Anyone else wishing to speak for or against this ordinance? If not, public comment is now closed at the pleasure of the council.
Move for approval.
We have approval by Councilwoman Souza.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Rodrick. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye. We don't want you to hit anybody either.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye. Next ordinance, please.
Luck.
All set, sir. Good luck.
The next ordinance is also for second and final passage with public hearing, and that's Chapter 2, Article 7, Budget Ordinance, sponsored by Councilman Cahoon, Councilman Morado, Councilwoman Souza.
I think we talked about this at length. I will wait for a public comment before I make a motion.
Sure. Again, this is second passage, and it is open for public comment, so anyone wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, please approach the podium. Mr. Fattaro.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Going over the ordinance, the only concern that we, the administration has is, it was the, I thought it was the understanding that Section A concerning the presentation of the department budgets was struck during, or prior to first passage.
I, I'd like to echo that. That was my understanding as well. I know that we had additional language in there with regard to the timing of when those things would need to be submitted and that those would then be available to the council. And I know that we had discussions as to whether or not that was consistent with the charter and the powers established in the charter. I think we determined it was not and decided to remove that language. So I thought this language in its entirety would actually come out. Actually, I, I have to concur. I apologize for that. You are correct. We are supposed, we were supposed to strike that from.
Section A.
Section A, correct.
So we can, Mr. Solicitor, correct me if I'm wrong, we can continue to vote on this as scheduled and we just.
It'll just revert to first passage because you're changing it.
Okay.
So it would be first passage, I just, if I, I'm sorry, just to clarify. So if we were to, for example, construct a motion that says, you know, move to approve with the understanding that we're striking passage or paragraph A or section A, is that?
I would like you to make a motion prior to public, oh, we can wait for public comment now if you want to, but let's have public comment. After the public comment, we'll strike section A of the ordinance, and then it'll go to the first, that'll be considered first passage, and then second passage will be after this. That'll be another meeting. Copy. We have to re-advertise.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Fattaro. Anyone else from the public speaking?
Does it advertise it?
Wishing to speak for or against this ordinance, please approach your podium. If not, I'm going to close public comment at this point in time. Public comment is now closed. Would anyone like to make a motion at this point in time with the corrections?
I, I would just want to point out, this was, there was a lot of back and forth between the council and the administration on this. I think this is some good cooperative work here on a matter that we all definitely found to be controversial last September, October, November. So thanks, everybody who put in the time to, to make this work. With that said, I will move to approve, understanding that we'll be striking section A.
Let's make a motion to strike section A first, and then we'll vote on that, and then we'll move to approve as a message.
Oh, this is a multi-part, so I'm going to retract my motion, and I'm going to move to strike from the ordinance as written, section A.
Seconded. Roll call, vote.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye.
I'll follow that with step two, move to approve the ordinance as amended. First passage. First, for first passage.
So it has to come on to the next meeting for second passage because it has to be advertised.
Correct. Second.
Thank you. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye. Thank you. Next ordinance, please.
The next and last, this is for second and final passage, also with the public hearing, is ordinance amendment, Section 8-5, closing hours for businesses to allow extended hours from 1:00 AM until 6:00 AM with council approval, sponsored by Councilwoman Souza.
Again, this is for public hearing. Anyone from the public wishing to speak for or against this, please approach the podium. Sir, if you could just state your name for the record.
George Smith. Councilwoman Souza, I understand there's going to be a probationary period, and after that, there'll be granted a license and a renewed every year. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Can you guarantee the city or the residents around any of these establishments won't have any problems?
I can't guarantee that for any business.
Thank you.
Whether they're 24 or not.
Thank you. You made a point. Nobody knows what the future holds. Let's look. We can't predict what's going to happen in the future. Let's look what happened in the past. Let's look what happens to past councils' mistakes. They allowed four establishments to open up within a quarter of a mile on Waterman Avenue in East Providence. All four of those establishments serve alcohol. I happen to work a job that required me to work three out of four of my weekends. Many times, Saturday, Sunday, Monday at 1:00 AM, awakened by people being loud coming out of those establishments. Learned by past councils' mistakes. Trash got so bad, one, one property owner put a trash can on Waterman Avenue. I don't know, but you, Councilwoman Souza, but I don't like waking up in the morning and come up and picking up a nip bottle here, a beer bottle there. That's what happened. Nobody thought of that. Two out of those four establishments have no parking for their patrons or very limited parking for their patrons. So what happens? You'll have instances where people park right up to the corner. You mentioned this about Warren Avenue. So when people come out of Martello Street, Warwick Street, Roma Street, Appian Way, Apulia Street, they take their life in their hands trying to access Waterman Avenue. Past councils' mistakes. I've had people where you, where you have guys, they want to, everybody know they're there, so they start up their motorcycle. It's warm weather, you got the windows open, they're roaring up the street. I've complained to two different Ward 2 councilmen about this. Been taking care of it for a little while, then it comes back. I was amazed to hear that there was an establishment operating seven years in violation of ordinances. So even if they follow the ordinance and everything, we have problems. If they don't follow the ordinance, are the ordinances being enforced? Seven years? I strictly oppose this ordinance. The only thing you can do is, if it was to concern a 24-hour establishment for a medical establishment such as at Kettle Point, otherwise, don't make the same problems councils have done in the past. You want to be business friendly? Let me introduce a new term to you. Why not be resident friendly? Think of the residents that have to live with that. Nobody can guarantee what's going to happen in the future, but let's learn from having with the past. Please, don't pass this ordinance. You have business people out here against it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak for or against this, please approach your podium. podium.
I thought I needed to come up on behalf of the gyms. That is my primary concern. I feel that this ordinance is not forcing anyone to be open 24/7. The businesses that have been open 24/7 serving the residents and have done well serving the residents for over 17 years without any problems, and the most of them, the majority of the gyms that I'm aware of are not residential neighborhoods. They're in plazas that are well-lit. I have a friend in the audience who's too shy to speak, who's been an employee for 12 years at a gym, during overnight hours, never a problem. Police have never had to be called. There was, there are people who typically go to gyms, don't bring alcohol, they're health-conscious. So I'd like the city to maybe consider on a case-by-case basis, the type of, when you're accepting the licenses, consider the type of business it is. I mean, if, but if businesses want to be open 24/7, they'll present their case, why, you know, they should be allowed to be open 24/7. As far as gyms are concerned, I, we, there are so many people that were going, like I was, in the middle of the night because they had odd hours, they worked two jobs, they had kids in high school that they had to take care of after school, they couldn't go in the evening. A lot of them left East Providence, they left the gyms in East Providence, they went to Barrington. I talked to one lady who went to Paul River. A gentleman said that if this doesn't pass, he's going to be going to the gym in Warwick because it's on his way to Connecticut when he goes to work. These people don't work in East Providence, they work outside of the city in order to be able to live in East Providence. And you're going to be forcing these people to, you know, to frequent businesses outside of East Providence. That's, that's not good for East Providence gyms and any other businesses that have done well within the law, if, you know, for decades, being open 24/7. Allow the people to attend, you know, the gyms when it best fits their needs, you know, and not have to go outside of the city. That's all we ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, please.
So I was just sitting and listening, and I just felt the need to come up. So I was just thinking that you had a gymnasium that was open for seven years and was running 24/7, and nobody knew. So it's kind of an example of that it can work. You got another gym that just opened up that I think's looking through the same thing. I think it's okay for gymnasiums, laundromats are okay, but anybody serving alcohol, obviously not. Only because, as the woman said, not everybody's working a straight eight-to-five job. The company I work for, they work 12-hour shifts, they're either coming off at 7:00 in the morning or 8:00 in the morning. They won't have the ability to go to a laundromat whenever. Same thing going to a gym whenever. I think if the business, you know, wants to do it, they should be allowed to do it. I don't think it's a bad idea. It can be controlled. You know, again, you've had one doing it for seven years, and there was no issue, so that's just my opinion.
Thank you.
Well, we know, come on up, sir. In the meantime, I'm just going to speak my piece, and I'm not going to be laborious. And we all know how I feel about this. I'm against it. I'm against it because of prior experience that I've had on the council early on. I'm not against gyms opening up early in the morning. I'm a gym rat myself. 24 hours, when you say 24 hours, I'm just thinking that, you know, we just open Pandora's box when we say for one. It's got to be for all, the way I look at it. I'm not against establishments opening up. It's not so much, excuse me, it's not so much sometimes establishment, as Mr. Smith said, it's the people, it's the patrons after these establishments close, when they have their cars parked in residential areas that, and during the warm weather, somebody has their window open, they're standing right under their window at their car, talking, having a lengthy conversation as if it's, you know, 1:00 in the afternoon, that, these are some of the concerns that I've heard early on and why I'm against this. Sometimes it's not so much, or most of the time, it's not the establishment itself, it's the patrons, and it's what the patrons do after the fact. Case in point, the beer cans on the lawns, things of that nature, talking under somebody's windows on a Thursday evening, Friday evening, 1:00 Saturday evening, people trying to get to sleep. And it's not the establishment itself that is being rude, it's not being the establishment that they have people with a certain amount of alcohol, and they're stumbling out these places. It's the people, when they come out and they just decide that they're going to have a conversation at 12:00 or 1:00 in the morning in front of somebody's house, and it just doesn't, it just doesn't work for a lot of people. And that was my concern. Gyms, 4:00 in the morning, want to open up 4:00 in the morning? I'm all for that. But again, when you say gyms 24 hours, then where does it stop? You open up the Pandora's Box for other places to open up 24 hours as well. So that's the reason why I'm not so much for gyms opening 24 hours or later in the evening. It's just that I don't see that if you're opening up one particular business for 24 hours and why you can't do it for most businesses.
Good evening, Dean Pertikakis. I would just like to piggyback on what some people said, that when you look at gym and health centers, the patrons going in there, there is accountability. When you walk into a gym, you have to sign up for a gym membership, you put a credit card on file, they take down your information. When you go to a laundromat, anyone off the street from any town can just walk in, you'd have no idea who they are, they use the service. What if they vandalize surrounding properties? Is there any way for accountability to say this person was in here? No. You can say, oh, maybe we get their license plate. What if they walked in? You would never know. I mean, when you talk about gyms and health facilities, I mean, people come in because they need, they have a need to, you know, they sign in at a front desk, they give all their information, these people know who's entering. I'm sure a 24-hour gym, if it's unstaffed, they have a key card. That key card is associated to that person. A laundromat, anyone can walk in. Now, if I'm correct, a laundromat is a special-use permit under C1 and C2. Does that mean any business that is C1 and C2 can apply for 24 hours? Because it's pretty much the same general business, just like a laundromat, it's the same zoning, and a gym and health facility, I believe, is C3, C4. So what's that going to stop a C3 or C4 saying, well, I'm in the same land use, why can't I be 24-hour? You know, I meet the requirements that they meet. So I'm not opposed to the gyms and the health centers, but I'd strongly ask you to look at the laundromats because, from past experience, being an owner, I do not see a need for it. There has never been a need for it in this city. Has there been? Some of the other laundromats would have been up here years ago asking for it. Thank you.
And I'd just like to state one other thing as well, that that gym that was open for 24 hours for seven years, there was no information on record here. We had no information. How that happened baffles me. That gym had absolutely no information on record in the city clerk's office. So you're right, who knows if something did or did not happen? Because something could have happened, but we just don't know about it, just like the gym was in existence, but there was no information on that gym when you went into the city clerk's office. But I don't, anyone else from the public would like to speak for or against this ordinance? If not, I'm going to move to, for a public comment to close at this point in time. We have a gentleman who's approaching the podium.
I live right across the street from the laundromat. And like the gyms, I totally understand because they're in, with the old shores, you know, they're out of the residential area. But like now, 1:00 in the morning, people roll in, loud music. I'm right across the street, I hear it, you know what I mean? I just think it should be a cutoff time, you know what I mean? Not just people going at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, doing their laundry. Because what happens is, they hang out in their car. When they hang out in their car, they put their radio on. They're not doing anything bad, but it's still there. 1, 2:00 in the morning, radios are playing, everybody hears it. I just, I just think that's, so...
Thank you, sir. If we have, if we don't have anyone else from the public who would like to speak for or against this, public comment is now closed at this point in time. Is that the pleasure of the council?
So again, I've spoken about this numerous times. I've added more to the ordinance because it didn't address a lot of individual businesses, and some fall under a certain group of, a certain category. So I thought it was pertinent to make sure that they were individuals that didn't fall under certain categories that were labeled here on the ordinance, so we don't go into this issue down the line, having to revise the ordinance. That being said, this is a special permitted ordinance. So it is not open just to anybody to just one day say, I want to be open for 24 hours or extend my hours. Because again, it's extension of hours, so any business can extend hours, they don't have to be open 24 hours if that's not what their business model is. And they have to come before the council, and they have to prove to the council that there is a need and that the council is in favor of it, depending on where their location is, what type of a business it is. So it is, it does fall on the burden of the council to make the decision whether they think that it is appropriate for that business to have these extended hours, and if it meets the needs of the community. And then the probationary period, again, another safe zone so that way we can monitor, and that being the council themselves, individual, if it's within their ward and they are wanting to be diligent about representing their businesses and their constituents, the police department and any other officials in the city, gives us six months to see, is this working out in the community? Is this a fit? If it is not, then the license is not approved for the, for the remainder of the year. And if it does work and there are no issues, then they can be extended for the complete year. That being said, it does not mean that it is a one-and-done. Like any other license that is in the city, it is a privilege to have these certain licenses. And if there is show cause, then that business would then come before the council and have to speak about whatever violation they have committed or whatever nuisance that they are providing to the community. And the council, again, has the right to revoke any license, that is our right here on this panel as the licensing board. So I don't take this very lightheartedly, I take this very seriously. And any business that comes before the city will be on a case-by-case basis, in my opinion, and I would imagine that the rest of my colleagues and any subsequent council members down the line would do the same. With that being said, I have, this also, if it does pass for second passage today, it would, the ordinance would take effect as of March 1st. That meaning, after March 1st, any business would then be able to apply for the license and go through the procedures of coming before the council to get their licensing.
So, I mean, we've had this discussion quite ways back, and one of my main concerns, being in law enforcement, going on 20 years now, and I have firsthand experience in closing down bars, trust me, a lot of experience. One of my main concerns was, I did not want to see alcohol establishments, whether it's serving or selling, to be open beyond that 1:00 hour. And state statute already governs that, so I am, I am confident, and I'm happy with that, that state statute covers that. And if state statute did not cover that, we would, we would have included that in the ordinance. I would not have supported it without that language. So I do like the six-month probationary-type period and review, and we're like, but every, as Councilwoman Souza says, with every license that we issue, as you saw here tonight, there was a business that came up for selling underage, it was a show cause hearing that we did. If they have had many other violations for the same purpose, same reason, then we would take a stricter, you know, enforcement action on it. So I'm confident moving forward with that, that there's a mechanism in there to not extend alcohol serving or sales, so...
Mr. President, I won't repeat what Councilwoman Souza said or Councilman Morado. I think that there are safeguards. We have a probationary period. It's special permitting only, it's not caught, caught blanch. I have a question, maybe of Madam Clerk. What time does a laundromat, let's say, have to close now in the city or a business? Is it 1:00?
I believe it's 1:00, yeah.
Okay, so the problems we heard, for a couple of problems that are going on allegedly at a laundromat, not voting for this wouldn't solve that, because those problems are evidently happening before 1:00. And they can continue to go on with or without this. So that might be an issue of calling the police. Or I think a couple meetings ago, the police chief said he hadn't had many complaints yet, but if there's a spot in the city where people are inconveniencing and harassing residents, and it has to be happening by 1:00, because they can't open past that. So we need to stop that. As far as the one business being open seven years, I don't know, most of us weren't here. We had city managers who were here, we had building inspectors who were here, you know, one business cut by, I don't know. I know right now, we're on top of things as much as humanly possible. Been a couple of businesses recently shuttered, allowed to reopen, and some other issues. So we're watching whenever we can. So I don't have anything else to add other than that.
I guess, if I may, to me, it still goes, you open a business to make money, right? So you're only going to apply for a special permit for extended hours if you think that those extended hours will be profitable. If there is a risk in opening during those extended hours, if there is a risk of, I don't know, potential issues happening, I don't see why anyone is going to incur that risk unless there's a whole lot of profit on the other end. So, and when I think of my wife, who is a business owner in the city of East Providence, she's never going to apply for extended business hours because nobody's going to be interested in going into a gallery or art classes at 3:00 in the morning. So, I mean, I don't think the slippery slope argument applies. I don't think we're going to see a host of businesses running in here looking for extended hours. I think you're going to see those, and I mean, we had the one laundromat here asking for it. I can't personally understand how a laundromat is going to be profitable at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, but again, it's not, it's not my business. And I think that there is a sufficient safety valve whereby if we see something that's out of whack or is causing issues in the community, we can shut it off. To me, unless there is demonstrable reason for restricting people's rights and privileges, you don't do it.
With that being said...
I'd like to pass.
Councilwoman?
I'd like to pass for approval.
We have a motion for approval by Councilwoman Souza. Would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second, sir.
We have a second by Councilman Cahoon. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick's.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Nay. Next item, please.
Next item is adjournment.
Anyone like to make a motion for adjournment?
So moved, sir.
Second.
Second. Everyone? Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick's.
Aye, and I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Coach William Stringfellow. I'm going to vote aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.